All right, welcome everyone to our inaugural meeting for Town Council. And we will be starting off with the first order of business. We'll be swearing in ceremony and oath of office. And we'll ask Colleen to give us her note.
So it's a municipal act requirement. A person elected as a member of council must make the file with the chief administrative officer of office in the form approved by the minister. And a person may not carry out the power, duty, or function as a member of the council until the oath of office is filed. So I'm going to ask you all to stand. I'm not going to individually leave this all out except in class. Do you all solemnly declare that you are Canadian citizens? That you are the full age of 18 years? That you are electors of the Towne Niqwa? That you are residents of the province of Manitoba? That you are not disqualified under any provision of the municipal act or any other act of the legislation from being a member of the council of the Towne Niqwa? That you will act faithfully in the office of councillor without fear, favour, or affection, and will truly faithfully and impartially and best of knowledge and ability execute the duties and responsibilities of that office? And do you make this solemn declaration consciously believing it to be true and knowing that it is with the same force and effect as if made under oath and by virtue of the Canada Evidence Act? And individually, I'm going to ask you, do you, Brian Headley, swear that perform the oath of office as a member of council for the Towne Niqwa?
I do.
Do you, dear Gerald Gerards, swear that perform the oath of office as a member of council for the Towne Niqwa?
I do.
Did you, Jason Nadeau, also swear the oath of office as a member of the council for the Towne Niqwa?
I do.
Do you, Ron Sisley, so swear the oath of office as a member of the council for the Towne Niqwa?
I do.
Do you, Lisa Pottinger, so swear the oath of office as a member of the council for the Towne Niqwa?
I do.
Do you, Mary Costancheck, so swear the oath of office as a member of the council for the Towne Niqwa?
I do.
And do you, Mary Parrott, so swear the oath of office as a member of the council for the Towne Niqwa?
I do.
That's good. So if you can all gather your forms that you're going to sign now as part of the oath, I will validate them and we can get down to business.
Okay, that was everything on the procedures.
Yep, the official part's over. Unless you want to do your pictures right now.
We can wait until after the.
Okay, it'll be short, we'll do them at the end.
Yeah. Okay, at this point, we will look at appointment of deputy mayor. And so looking for mover and a seconder. Councillor Parrott, Councillor Gerard. Be resolved that Towne Niqwa hereby appoint Councillor Parrott as deputy mayor. All in favor? One.
Clearly he didn't know. He didn't know. I'll maybe just summarize.
You were a favorer of being.
I'm going to maybe just summarize. Just so the public is aware, under the organizational procedure by law, the head of council has the ability to promote appointments within the specific obligations such as deputy mayor and committee appointments. So our mayor actually attended our office and this was his request that we put on the resolution, so.
Yes, and we didn't finalize.
And clearly.
Okay. On to number two, so committee of appointments.
Should, wouldn't we maybe just, could I read these out first so that people have a chance to absorb a little bit because you don't have it on your agenda? So this was what the recommendation was. Committee of the whole would be all members of council. Board of revision, all members of council with Mayor Headley the chair and myself as a secretary. Human resources committee would be Mayor Headley and Councillor Gerard. General Government and Finance Committee, Councillor Gerard as the chair and Councillor Pottinger. Niqwa area district, or Niqwa area planning district would be deputy mayor Parrott and Mayor Headley. County Court Building, Councillor Gerard and Councillor Costancheck. Saigur to state management, Councillor Nadeau and Councillor Costancheck. The Federation of Canadian Municipalities, no appointed members, just a general membership. The Protection and Community Services Committee would be Councillor Pottinger as chair and Councillor Costancheck. Niqwa Veterinary Services District, Councillor Sisley. Home assistance Niqwa district or hand, Councillor Costancheck. Niqwa area disabled persons association, Councillor Sisley. Physician recruitment committee, deputy mayor Parrott. Spruce Plains Justice Committee, Councillor Nadeau. Public Works and Infrastructure Committee, deputy mayor Parrott as the chair and Councillor Sisley. Evergreen Environmental Technologies, Mayor Headley. Trans-Canada Yellowhead Highway Association, just a general membership for there, as well as general membership on the mantle of Good Growth Association. Recreation and Economic Development Committee, Councillor Sisley as chair and Councillor Pottinger. Western Regional Library and Niqwa Library, Councillor Nadeau and Bill Stillwell as a citizen rep. Whitewind Watershed Conservation District, Councillor Gerard and Bill Stillwell as a citizen rep. Niqwa Area Development Corporation or NATCO, deputy mayor Parrott and Councillor Pottinger. Yellowhead Centre, Councillor Nadeau. Yellowhead Economic Corridor, Councillor Nadeau. And Rossburn Subdivision Trails Association, Councillor Nadeau.
Right, so I guess, who is the committee again?
You and Mayor.
No.
No.
You and I are on NATCO.
NATCO?
Or no, sorry.
Physicians and Promoters.
Niqwa area planning.
So NATCO is.
NATCO is you and Lisa. So the clinic, we thought, we left that in physician improvement, just you.
Okay. Yeah, I thought that there, yeah, I thought this was on.
It was up there on the weekend, yeah.
Yeah, so, oh, it says.
I don't know what happened.
You should have been aware of this, but apparently, apparently not.
I thought you did, I forgot. I didn't know it disappeared. But it, okay. It could have something to do with setting up the too long of things too, because it was there. Yeah, it would know why.
Reese is on NATCO and Clint.
Yeah.
Yes.
Oh, oh, okay.
Did I hear that right? Yeah, you're on the hand right now.
Hand.
The home assistance Niqwa district. They mean a bunch. Maybe you want to explain where you chose.
So basically, what I looked at is what availability was for each, each of you, who was in, within the community and where you would fit in for different meetings and that. So, so for example, you know, we tried as much as possible to have at least two within. Jason, yours, you've got some with citizen reps, but you've got some there. Certainly I would help you with, you know, Rossburn or the economic corridor, if there's meetings at UCA, you know, I would work with you there. But we, what we tried to do was fit in where, where everybody could fit within what their availability was. And yeah, apologies that I guess I shouldn't have gone around, maybe spend some time with you on this, but I thought I'd deal with it. So anyways, you can look it over and that, I guess if there's, you know, if there's conflicts or things that are going to work, certainly get, get back to me when you're done with.
Yeah, it's going to be amended.
Yeah. Okay, so as it sits, yeah, so we'll go ahead with the resolution on this and if you, and if there's changes that need to be amended or not, the left, the left and right, we'll work on it if it's not. Okay, so we need a mover and seconder for that. Pottinger and Nadeau, all in favor? Carry. So the next one is assigning authorities. So we need to go through and need a motion for, for assigning authorities, so we need mover and seconder. Sisley and Parrott. Be resolved that the council of the Towne Niqwa authorize Mayor Headley, deputy mayor Parrott, Chair of Finance, Councillor Gerard, CAO Colleen, ACAO Judy, Finance Director Jamie Davy as signing authorities for the Towne Niqwa. Be it further resolved that items requiring signatures reflect a combination of one elected official and one staff member. All in favor? Carry. And final, I guess the final is adjournment?
Nope. I just have a few questions.
Okay, other matters?
So under the municipal act, we're required to talk about our annual organizational procedure by law at least once during a term of office. So I guess this is where I would ask your opinions on whether you've already this and would like to see changes to meeting times, to meeting dates, whether you're okay with committee structures, anything that you might deem relevant to taking a look at changing or the menu. So the minutes will reflect that we will carry forward that by law. Now I want to ask you to file your municipal council conflict of interest statements and assets in interest. This is important because we're looking at council conflict of interest under authority of that piece of legislation, council has to act appropriately. And should they have an interest in a particular property or a company or business or anything personal that they would gain an advantage from any particular matter that came before council, they disclose it on this form. For example, it could be the property you live at or business you look at. And you try to make sure you stay within the parameters of what you're allowed to do as council and not influence anything that would be anything financially or personally for that particular topic. So I'll hand this round, these fulfillables out. If you want to proceed, I can.
Okay. Okay, so I guess our final order is adjournment, move by?
One more thing.
One more thing. Other matters again?
So yeah, so we'll collect those just before you leave this evening, let them sit and put these on the spot and ready. So we passed a law in October 2020 called the Code of Conduct for Members of Council. Required in the bylaws is the fact that this bylaw will be reviewed every year at the inaugural meeting. The point of it is to make sure that council is held accountable for their actions, that they behave in an appropriate manner as delegates of the Towne Niqwa, not just at functions of council at the table, but at meetings of the council, anywhere, no matter where they be held, at, you know, the annual conventions, whatever. So when you're out and doing and conducting business as a delegate of the Towne Niqwa, you're asked to behave in good conduct honestly and serve the all prior interests of the Towne Niqwa with respect. I won't read through the bylaws very lengthy. We shared that ahead of time to make sure that you are aware of all those provisions. You are required to make sure you come prepared for meetings and do your homework. You are required to make sure you don't have improper use or influence of anything in particular, on any particular topic. You do not come into conflict of interest within any matters that come to the council table. You do not disclose confidential information that will put the Towne Niqwa in a liable situation. And you make sure you behave in your communications, your terms and policies that we currently have existing, no matter whether it's social media or otherwise, that you use municipal resources appropriately and respectfully. You don't just blow the town truck kind of thing because you're a councilman. So that's just a few things in here. You can't take gifts and whatnot for performance of your duties. There is topics related to elections and how you behave with elections. There's a formal complaint procedure. What came about when this was put into place was previous to these bylaws, the only remedy within the municipal act was to censure a member of council. And the censure is just a little verbal acknowledgement in a meeting that you did something bad. So they stepped up the game municipal relations as passed legislation to amend authority under the act to basically say that there are other sanctions now. You could be, you know, a fine for a dollar value of $1,000. You could be, have your commitments to the council reduced as far as removing you off of committees. You will still remain as a council member. So various states, so just as long as you read this and are totally aware of what the expectation is of you as a member of the council and that you could be called for task should you step outside those boundaries. Now!
Any other matters? Oh, I'll call for adjournment. Move by? Deputy Mayor Parrott, seconded by Councillor Costancheck. Be it resolved that we now adjourn this inaugural meeting at 6:51 PM. All in favor?
We only have pictures.
Yeah, we have Reese now or?
No, just do the pictures.
All right, welcome to the November 1st regular meeting of the Town Council. And we will start off with approval of the agenda. So I need a mover and seconder. Deputy Mayor Parrott, Councillor Gerard. Be it resolved that we approve the regular meeting agenda for Tuesday, November 1st, 2022. All in favor? Carry. And each of you would have got your minutes, looked over your minutes. And if I can get mover and seconder. Councillor Nadeau and Councillor Costancheck. Be it resolved that the council of the Towne Niqwa approves the minutes of the regular meeting held October 18th, 2022 circulated. All in favor? Carry. Okay, and we'll start off with council reports. Yes, in the first meeting, they don't have much of council reports, but there may be some from the past for returning councillors.
Okay, mine short. So the WMRL did meet and it was approved to raise the levy by 50 cents. So it did happen and that'll be our new, our new levy moving forward with a 50 cent increase due to inflation in order to cover the cost of salaries, which also includes the new wage going up to $15 too, so.
Okay, any questions of Councillor Nadeau? Councillor Costancheck?
On October 21st, the Niqwa district candy band transit along with the Niqwa Legion ladies auxiliary town held a fundraiser at the Legion Hall. It was a meal and we did a gift card tree raffle as well. Evening was a great success raising $3,452 towards a hand man organization. A very, a huge thank you to so many people, to the Niqwa Legion ladies auxiliary for their hard work and delicious meal and including providing 54 takeout meals to our community. Thank you to Great and Dawn Shaw for getting those meals delivered, to the businesses who generously donated to the local shop, the local gift card tree. The support was very much appreciated. The transit committee and the contractor, Justin Chikowski, for the amazing group and the hard work that they did to get this organization and this evening all together. Big thank you to everyone and congratulations to our local gift card tree winner, who was Michelle Ferguson.
I do. Any questions?
Oh, I was just gonna, with Rex, sorry.
Oh, Councillor Sisley.
So Heidi had a monster match this past Saturday at Arts Forward. Arts Forward partnered with her on this and it was a huge success. Within minutes of us opening the door, we were full. We had kids lined up outside and Heidi did a great job just in getting, she had canvassed the town, got a bunch of donations. The little kids all got to home with tree bags and had games to play throughout, they had blast. And then we did end up with between 30 and 40 kids from high school, which was a lot more than we anticipated. And all of those kids got to go home with Titans tickets and it was our response that they got to come home with gift cards and that too. So it was a huge success.
What date was on it?
That was on Saturday.
That's a lot more teenagers than I would have thought.
We were surprised, pleasantly surprised with the amount of teenagers that came up.
Sounds like.
It was good.
Fun head. Any other council reports?
Yeah, I guess, so you may have noticed that the exit on Mountain Avenue and the clinic has been improved and that was Lake Agassi Builders who had got the tender for that as well as they completed the job. And I haven't checked today to see if the pylons are gone, but I'm hoping they're going soon. Curst Construction was awarded the roof replacement and the canopy tenders for the clinic. And we had a luncheon celebration for Dr. Ong. We had our meeting and then we had a luncheon celebration for Dr. Ong as he is retired. And he's, he was foremost in creating the environment of the clinic that we have as we see it today. And the Farm Pleasure Lottery is still hot and on and it's, the draw is this Sunday, so to pay for all this stuff, you gotta buy your tickets and buy them out. They're online, the numbers on the door over here and you can phone in and it'll be on the radio game Friday and Saturday. And I'm not sure about Sunday, but phone in Friday and Saturday anyway. That should be good.
Okay. Any other council reports? If not, I will go to our manager of operations, Denise, the man of the hour. I think you have something to report to me.
Before I begin, would you like to report Friday's event at Past Protective Care?
On this Friday's event?
Yeah.
Up kind of coming event, oh, okay. Ah, I can't remember the time, but yes, we have. We have the opening of our RCMP building. So the grand opening of the Niqwa detachment is Friday, November 4th. So the ribbon cutting will start at 1:00 PM, be an open house from 1:00 to 4:00. And understanding that there are some areas within our RCMP building that not everybody will be able to see, but there will be tourists through and, you know, I'm not sure if there's any other.
And the indoor fire hall as well, in case you haven't seen it.
Right next door, so that's Friday, this Friday, November 4th, ribbon cutting at 1:00.
Thank you. Any other thoughts? I just asked again if it shows up to the event, if they do, because the Congress said that we do have two operating facilities, so the fire hall is active to not obstruct any complete or any volunteer firefighter parking. We'll put no parking signs up in those halls just to ensure no parking locations. Our water plant reservoir is up and running after a long construction period. It appears to be running pretty good. Staff are still figuring out a few little hiccups with it, but all in all, it's way supposed to, so it's pretty exciting news. Over the past weekend, staff had also performed their annual swapping, that would be the cleaning of the pipe from the Oberon and Amerson well sites to remove any buildup within those pipes that come into town. So that is a long process. The process usually takes a complete day, staff work in the wee hours of the night. The system has to go offline, it's quite tricky, so it's a lot of hard work and I really appreciate it, so good list of staff for getting that began this year. As I already mentioned, grand opening this Friday, the RCMP. As many may have seen, Lake Leef is in town paving, completing Davidson Street, leading into the Brown Hill, I haven't gone to inspect that one yet, and they should be making that way over to the Mountain and Palmer Street intersection, so just again, be cautious of the construction equipment and they'll be racking things up. Unfortunately, we'll not be completing all of our painting this year, so we'll be in discussions with them to make sure that we have a spring arrival with them coming in. Other works, staff have been busy with water and sewer installations. Many may have noticed that we have interviewed some as well on Mill Street when we were servicing the new apartment block on the old Murphy's block. So that work, the water and sewer haven't completed and now we'll be attaching some store of sewer going up the hill, so that shouldn't be too bad. We'll try to do repairs on the street because we've got open cuts and try to put some more super material in there because it is still a little squishy and not quite, didn't really like that yet. We're still running our yard waste program, so residents can still put it out in a compostable bag, so ideally I want to see a brown paper bag out there for residents, that makes it a lot easier. If it's in a plastic bag, staff are instructed to leave it, so they will not touch anything you have that's in a plastic bag. Lagoon Construction Meeting, our phase two, Lagoon Construction Meeting will be held this Thursday at 10:30, so the pre-bid construction meeting will do some test holes and contractors will have an opportunity to view the site, putting up my quote on that bid. As usual, we're in November right now, so we started our budget items ready for next year as new council, so you may want to put your wish list together if there's some items you want to see and pass them on to staff so that we can start working on preparing some numbers for your, something that's added to. Road construction of the new hospital will also be commencing shortly. We've all located third place, possession of properties of our property on November 1st. So staff will, staff and construction company will start working there shortly. Stan Tech Engineering was out again, just to do some final checkups on our 22, 2022 DFA claims, so they have to come back for some second round due to allegations of some of the damaged sites and reevaluate them. Also under Park Lake Construction, there's a removal of the temporary crossing of the bridges has been formally approved. All paperwork's in place, so we should see construction coming, coming in to remove those temporary crossings. So again, when that are, keep the cautious of the equipment. The Park Lake Rehabilitation Project has also been awarded and I believe that we were just waiting to sign some construction documents approved, track for construction on that project, so that's exciting. We haven't seen a construction schedule nor we have a construction meeting yet, so we don't have a schedule to update you with. And as of yesterday, the Gulf Course Bridge replacement that was damaged in the 2020 flood has been gone off for tender and that project closes, bids close on November 14th. So, put it back.
Okay, any questions? Favor.
One of the things that we pride ourselves in is looking towards the future. Could I ask you, Denise, to explain the dirt piles east of town and why you're planning for the future and how? And the opportunity that you provided by your strategic planning for that Mill Street? And explain as to why you did all that and it's a positive thing, just not trying to nail anything like that. But that was like a good draw, I'd like you to tell everybody how you did that.
The dirt piles east towards the industrial park, during that subdivision, that process application, we had approval to realign some of the drainage projects in there. We also still have to correct it until the drainage wants to retention. So in the midst of having a big slew, we're going to correct the drain, that's why we brought some extra fill in there to correct that and then hopefully expand the beautiful things farming project that they're doing right there. So we'll listen to the rest of the week and until such time that a purchaser comes along to acquire the property from the town. But just an opportunity came for some free fill and we jumped on it, so always appreciate the free dirt.
Mill Street?
Which one are we talking about on Mill Street now?
Am I, I got the street, well, you did the sewer, or the water roof and then you got her, have I got the street wrong?
Am I got the street wrong?
I don't know. Better. I'm having a, I'm having a quick think. Mill Street we just did for servicing of the apartments.
Yes.
So we did from round two, mountain, many directional drill in the mountain.
But did you not create a loop and expand for future development?
Uh, no, not quite yet. Just due to time constraints, we heavily prepped and waiting for that loop. That'll be a spring project. We didn't want to open up anymore at the bottom of the hill until we get the papers so we could come back and attach that up really. So everything's in place and ready to start digging again in spring.
We'll come back at you in spring.
Yeah, that's all there.
Okay, any other questions?
So just gonna confirm that the tennis courts, that that will be waiting until spring then?
Yes, in consultation with our actual tennis court expert guy, he actually recommended we do not pave just because we'd have bad joints. The tent is too cool to really get a good compaction and merging of the asphalt together. So he figured that our best scenario would be waiting till spring with more ambient heat out, we can get a better surface length.
Can we get someone to do that in the spring so we don't go into year three without the courts?
That's something we'll be discussing with the finance committee on a strategy of how we ensure they come back.
Okay. All right, so final finance. Okay, if you've looked at the October accounts, I guess I need a mover and seconder. Okay, Counselor Gerard, seconded by Counselor Potter. Be it resolved that we approved the accounts of October 2022 totaling $2,471,052.96 as reviewed and representing check number 2022-01855 to 2022-02055, but excluding 2022-01872 and 2022-02038. All in favor? Period. Okay, Counselor Gerard and myself will move ourselves to. I don't know, Deputy Mayor Parrott?
Okay, so this is a resolution to approve two checks, 2022-02038 and 2022-02038 for October 2022 to Home Hardware and Ni'quah Law, totaling $9,745.24. Do I have a mover? Okay, Cecily and Costinchuk. All in favor? And carry.
Okay, final to new business, snow removal agreement calling.
This is an annual agreement that we signed with the Department of Transportation and Infrastructure. This one will be for the 2223 year. The rate paid for snow removal will be $9,597. Basically no change from the 2022 year. And it'll be for that portion of highway in the town in Ni'quah, basically Mount Mountain and provincial trunk highway 16 West Commerce Street. Unless there's anything you wanna add.
Any questions? Okay, moved by Deputy Mayor Parrott, seconded. Counselor Nado, be it resolved that we approved, apparently not checks. Be it resolved that we authorized the CAO to sign 2022, 23's snow removal agreement with Manitoba Transport and Infrastructure. All in favor? Period. Um, municipal, provincial municipal justice advisory committee?
So this is a request I had out of the Association of Manitoba Municipalities. Given the election results for the province, they have vacancies on the provincial municipal justice advisory committee. They would like to see if the town in Ni'quah would be interested in appointing a representative considering that we do have a municipal police and service agreement, RCMP contract from the Midwestern district and recently opened a new detachment. Generally speaking, this group includes members from cities, towns and rural municipalities in Manitoba as well as representatives from the A and M in Manitoba Justice. Individuals are selected based on geographic location, municipality size and experience with different types of police service agreements. The objective of the committee is to bring a focus on strategic collaboration to justice and community safety issues present in municipalities. The appointment is for a four-year term effective December 2020. Meetings occur no less than twice a year and virtual meeting options can be provided. The A and M does not cover any costs. They will be with the responsibility of municipality. If we are interested in putting a member on this committee, they would like a resolution of council and an indication that we would be willing to cover any cost should they attempt. So we did not have a member in the last council term. We did in the term before that. Normally, not always, it tends to be your head of councils. So at that time, Mayor Groot was the representative on the committee. Quite often otherwise, it will be the chair of the committee associated with policing, which would be the protection committee. So I guess the recommendation we would have from here is speaking with the A and M and we would be our head of council or Counselor Potter as the chair of the protection committee. But let's hope for this question. I just needed it. I defer to the head of council.
Oh, okay. Yeah, I, I, yeah, I think I can.
You're okay with that? Well, then write your name and swat.
Okay. Okay, so I guess we need a resolution moved by. Counselor Potter, I think, Deputy Mayor Parrott. Be it resolved that we hereby appoint myself, Brian Henley, to the provincial municipal justice advisory committee for a four-year term effective December 22. Understanding that any associate travel costs would be borne within town in Ni'quah. All in favor? Period. Uh, subdivision, new hospital site.
So in your next item after this one, you're going to proceed with the first reading to open public roads that will give effect to access to the new hospital location on Southwest 341415. What this resolution is, does, is provide comfort to shared health and Prairie Mountain Health Authority that Ni'quah is committed to seeing this project through and making sure the water sewer is placed and the road infrastructure exists. So it is quite a lengthy resolution. It did not appear on your agenda as you read through your stuff this weekend. This is kind of a last minute thing because today was the closing of the purchase of the property and they wanted this resolution in place. It could not wait till 15. So I will let Mayor Hively read it out, but it basically commits the town in Ni'quah to helping partner with shared health and Prairie Mountain Health and concluding the subdivision conditions that still remain outstanding such as the drainage plan, the traffic impact study, all the requirements of Manitoba infrastructure to create those access and get all the permits in place. It's gonna be time consuming, but the easements required. And the fact that we understand by doing that, we do have a financial commitment. But should we not get an exemption under the capital contribution through the regional health authorities policies that are in place for contribution financially, that we be considered as an in-kind contribution, already paying our financial cost into putting these pieces of infrastructure in place, but also understanding that all of the relevant properties out of Southwest 34 and those surrounding that may get services extended to them will pay a proportion amount to that, that time cost. So any questions that are all that, or Heather, you give that to the resolution?
Okay, so we'll need a mover and seconder for this resolution. Uh, Counselor Potter and Counselor Costinchuk. So whereas subdivision application 4437-22-8407 sets up the subdivision of a 39 acre parcel from property owned by Daniel and Leanne Zettler in the Southwest 341415 West for the purposes of selling the parcel of Prairie Mountain, to Prairie Mountain Regional Health Authority for this construction of a new regional hospital in Ni'quah. And whereas the council of the town in Ni'quah deems it in its best interest, interests of the municipality and the greater community to participate as necessary with property owners, shared health and Prairie Mountain Regional Health Authority to ensure all criteria contained in the conditional approval issued by the community and regional planning office can be satisfied in order to conclude the subdivision and facilitate the transfer title. And whereas the council of the town in Ni'quah understands that in addition to the east-west road access fronting the parcel, the parcel will also have a direct north-south access to PH16 at a location that conforms with the PTH functional plan for Manitoba Transportation and Infrastructure. And whereas bylaw 3219-22 of the town in Ni'quah so shall identify the road that will service the parcel, which will open as public under a formal road plan. Now therefore be it resolved that the council of the town in Ni'quah formally commit to a continued engagement with all parties to conclude subdivision 4437-22-8407 in a timely manner and continue to work towards ensuring the property can be serviced with sewer, water and road infrastructure that will meet and exceed design standards of the town in Ni'quah. Be it further resolved that although the town is prepared to take technical and financial control of the installation and construction of sewer, water and roads, further discussions will be required to outline the respective distribution of costs to be leveraged fairly and proportionately against benefiting properties, taking into account present and future development opportunities that may come to fruition on Southwest 341415W and shall include the ability to extend to approved services to neighboring locations. Be further resolved that should there be no exemption to the, from the community contribution required to the capital projects under the Manitoba Health, the town in Ni'quah would deem that those amounts expended by the town in Ni'quah to service and supply the 39 acre parcel eligible be measured as in-kind community contribution for the purpose of satisfying policy of Manitoba Health. All in favor? Period. Okay, public roads.
So this is the bylaw now, to open the roads on Southwest 341415. It's just a simple bylaw and it's prepared based on a plan that Stephen Bradley Richard created this morning on October 27th and it's designed to cause a number 1562-2022. After first reading, as we go into the province of Manitoba for circulation amongst all of the departments, we will await comments. Should there be no comments and it returns probably in about three, four weeks, we can proceed with seconded agreement.
Okay, any other questions? Last for mover. Deputy Mayor Parrott, seconded by Counselor Cecily. Be it resolved, the bylaw 3219-22 being a bylaw of the town in Ni'quah to open municipal roads, 34, Southwest 341415W. Now we're in for the first time. All in favor? Period. Okay, any other business?
Counselor Gerard. I'll just make mention that over the town, back in the summer, we undertook a project with a food cycler program. There are still a number of food cyclers still available in the town office. I would encourage all my fellow counselors to take up that challenge as well. I'm just about at week 12 on that program. It's amazing how much food waste can be removed from going to landfill. This program would provide a resident a $500 machine for a cost of $175 and simply filling out a 12-week survey. And it's fairly simple. It's just a check when you do it, so. But it is amazing and some of the residents who are participating now are actually quite impressed with how it's performing.
I would like to add to that. I have one that we're using Arts Forward that we started through the Field to Table Club. And it is the slickest thing and amazing how much waste is that we're.
It's gone.
Yeah, it's gone. And we're putting it in the gardens there, so we should have very confessionals.
Oh, that's great. Okay, so the challenge is on. All right, anything else?
I just wanted to thank our, our citizen rep Hector Swanson for being on the library board for the last three and a half years. And thank you very much for your service. You serve well and like to welcome our new, our new rep, who will be Bill Stillwell, as we heard at our last meeting. So welcome, Bill, and we look forward to his experience. He was the counselor who was on that board as a counselor for many years. So it'll be really nice to have him back there with all that history to help support the library movement.
Yeah, excellent comments. Thanks, sir. Okay. That is it. I would ask for, uh, Durbin. Counselor Costinchuk and Deputy Mayor Parrott. All in favor? Oh, I didn't read the resolution. Uh, that's good. Be it resolved that the council of the town in Ni'quah do adjourn the regular reading at 7:28. All in favor? Period. All in favor?